It's totally usually a seat. Now, it's not too much chat. So I'll say you can even have if that was someone if there's that. I know. Or we can say.
Right, it is seven o'clock on Tuesday, November 18th. You will start the select board meeting for this evening. We'll start out with the introductions of the people at the table. My name is Toby Harmon, I'm Chair of the Board.
Catherine Turnowski.
Mark Casper.
And if you people will be kind enough, if you want to address the board and or the audience, please step up to the microphone. It'll assist Keisha and it'll make sure that all the communication is heard at the residence. Before we go any further, I just want to take a moment. Ray Buxton passed away this week, as everybody pretty much knows. Ray was the definition of a volunteer for the town of Newfields. He was on the Select Board. He was the building inspector. He was on the fire department. He was a fire warden. He was on the water department for something forty odd years or plus. He was on the Celebration Committee. And he was also the grand marshal last year. And he also drove for ready rides. And I remember Ray telling me when he was on the Select Board, it was Thanksgiving Day, and somebody called him and said, I'm at Town Hall trying to register my car and there's nobody here. You just go, welcome to the Select Board, right, Ray? So with that being said, I'd just like to take a minute to reflect on Ray and a moment of silence for Ray. Thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda tonight is the police chief with his budget. Chief, you're up.
Copy.
What do you think of that?
The operating budget, the spreadsheet as well as the. Obviously, the increase of the jury because of salaries and insurance rates, health insurance went up fourteen point seven percent. And then dental went up four point four. So those two major increases and those two line items will explain those two increases. Of all that, we had a few items that went down. And obviously, a few items that went up in particular because the body camera these first year after the grant took effect, which is under, excuse me, under seven sixty. So second to the last item in the spreadsheet. So that that increase there is basically because the body cameras that we did receive a grant that paid for half of our original muscle for the basement for like five years. Any particular questions about any particular line items or?
Jeff?
No, I reviewed this in advance of this meeting.
Mark?
No, I think we had already expected these numbers to go up.
Okay, so we had a fourteen point seven percent increase in healthcare costs for our employees. And last year to facilitate bringing salaries up, some of the expenses of the police department were dropped last year to make it easier to make the salaries for our officers competitive. And we didn't need that big a jump in salary this year to keep them competitive. And so some of the cut costs that were cut in 2025 to make the ballot budget manageable have been brought back in. So just training costs, the.
Training costs back up to seventy five hundred from what it was twenty four. We've cut it down to five thousand this year to bring it back up for a couple of reasons. One, we are required by annual for first aid CPR and Narcan training. So that's a total of forty hours for ten offices. So bringing that back up this year makes sense. We're already over budget a little bit this year. But obviously, bringing it back to what it was in 2024 makes sense for budget purposes.
Okay, Chief, would you just talk a little bit about the other professional services expenses? Line item three nine zero.
Yeah, three nine zero. That item actually went down this year. Three ninety is basically paid out of for different things that we have, such as our computer services, our contract that we have with our IT company that the town has as well. The email that we implemented last year where we switched over to Office 365. As well as our online scheduling app for our department, as well as online training that we pay a certain fee per officer per year, which actually makes it beneficial and cost effective of doing some of the training that we are required to do online instead of sending an officer or access off site to a different location where you would have to pay them of your travel time and then fuel yourself like that. So we found last year, we implemented that online training, which actually was cost effective overall. That item went down a little bit because we dispatched through Newmarket. We got a congressional grant where we're switching all our software over. It's going to happen sometime in 2026. And the grant that we got was for the migration of all the data that we've had in our computer systems that we had for twenty thirty years to migrate over to the new system. We have to switch over because that's who we are dispatching through through Newmarket. So they are switching over. The grant is for both towns, Newmarket and Newfields. The grant is for one year and after that one year, we are responsible to move forward. So that item in three ninety went down this year because we do not have to pay any services for our software. However, I expect that number going back up to at least what it is now, if not a little bit more for 2027.
Grant availability coming up. There's some grants on the horizon that will be able to help you out the coming year that you're aware of.
We've already had grants for highway safety that supplies extra funding for extra controls. We applied for a best grant that pays for fifty percent of the ballistic best. We replace our ballistic best every four to five years. There's a shelf life, the best. And then there's other grants come up here and there. Things a little bit slow because of the government shutdown that just got lifted here in the last week or so. So a lot of the grants have been delayed coming out for this next fiscal year.
Any other questions from the board? Mark?
No.
Any questions from the audience? In that case, we'll put Chief Buxton on the hook.
A lot of the staff.
Yeah, you guys got copies of the.
Yes.
Budget. So you see some increases in some of the areas. dues and subscriptions, we're we're actually like a thousand over on that this year already. Just some of our our memberships and stuff that are just increasing. Dispatch, I mean, that's just that's a yearly increase on our dispatch services. Heat and oil, I went up a couple hundred dollars because we're right at the. I think I'm expending my budget right now and we still have another another month to go. And machinery and equipment, we're just starting to get some stuff that's starting to get old. We just got to replace it, you know, some of the smaller stuff, you know. You got a chainsaw that you can't get started, stuff like that. Get a do some replacements on stuff like that, but try to keep it as low as possible. I think we're about one point eight five percent increase. What's your current census of membership, Jeff? How many guys you got?
Right now, I mean, I got, I mean, I still got like eighteen on the roster, but you know, active wise, you know, eight, you know. Make all the calls for five, four, four or five guys, but other ones are kind of sporadic in between, but that's it.
Right.
Wish I had more.
Anything on sale, the old truck? You've gotten some interest though.
Yeah, there's been been some big packages out, so you'll have some open up on the first.
Yeah, okay. And I did follow up today in the capital reserve as of thirty one October. We have four hundred and fifty six thousand, five hundred and twenty four dollars and sixty one.
The end amount though?
Yeah, that was the end of October.
No, I mean, this is this is the thing that I I battle with them all the time. They always give me this this two amounts at the end. It says total market value. They never give me that. They tell me it's the next one down. So.
I'll follow up.
I just follow up on that because that's kind of where it was in September, too. But I used the fourth four hundred three oh seven figure. So if it is great.
And it's bouncing around right now, but we're due what? We will owe them four fifty four, eight fifty four.
That's correct.
So right now, we're a little fat, but not very much, a couple thousand on that number.
On that number, if that number is correct.
Okay, so we'll follow up on that. Jeff? Mark?
So if if that number is not correct and we were short fifty four thousand, what would happen? What would happen then?
We'd be out seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars because the manufacturer doesn't get, we signed a contract. We we have to be able. So we do have a fifty thousand dollar warrant article this year.
Asking.
Yep. Yeah, right. So we have a fifty thousand dollar warrant article this year that we we seriously, we've been talking about, we got to think about increasing that anyways. Here. That what worries me is that's a vote, okay? It's always passed, but it's never guaranteed. So if that goes, you know, currently where where I had it figured from the end of September, which I didn't, I didn't get the report. So we would be about just under five thousand dollars short. However, we'd have to put that money in if that money is voted in cap reserve, it needs to go in and not in August, like June, July and August like it has been in the past, so.
We'll keep an eye on this as we move.
And and I'll be able to speak to you a little bit more if they send me that newest report. I can do the figures because.
Do you expect the number for the truck to be solid as it is now?
I still have eleven thousand dollars in contingency. So they've already used up nine. We we put twenty thousand in the total price for contingency on increases and stuff like that. They've used up nine. I have not had any increase since June. Actually, May, I think it was the increase came in. So ideally, I'd like to see it staying where it's at, but I just know I can't guarantee it.
Yeah. Right.
But if, you know, if it goes any higher than eleven, we're gonna, we'll have to talk about it, but.
We will, we will find a solution for it.
Okay, perfect.
Right. Any questions? More in art, but we will just really push that hard. Yeah, say we've not had an issue with warrant articles on this failing, but we will really stress that a lot of yes. Yeah. Sure. Anything from the audience? In that case, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Allison?
I apologize for not getting this to you earlier, but we only finally. So plus it's very soon.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Alphma Conservation Commission. Basically, we're we're looking at the same line items that we had last year. There's been a minor increase in pretty much everything.
Don't see any surprises on here.
Yeah, it shouldn't. The only, the only thing of discussion we could talk about now, but we give through the Conservation Commission budget a thousand dollars to prep for monitoring in Great Bay. To some extent, that's a goodwill gesture to support the monitoring that is important for our our sewage and our wastewater permit. There's there's some, you know, arguably that that should come out of the budget for the wastewater and sewer. I don't feel strongly about it, but it is supporting that goodwill around that permit. I mean, the money comes ultimately from the same pot, but.
Rather not come from yours.
I mean, I don't know if it matters.
Yeah.
I mean, nobody's objected to it coming from here, but I think I think to some extent that emphasizes the fact that it's the town doing its due diligence around monitoring for that permit. So it's a little bit of just, there's a little bit of optics there. So it's not just the Conservation Commission being green and doing the right thing by water. It's the town doing its due diligence by its permit.
All right, we'll sit down and talk about it as we work our way.
I also have the CSX letter. Do you want that now or later?
I will see if you don't mind. Jeff, do you have any questions? Mark? Any questions from the audience?
Quick question.
Ma'am, the desk. Yourself, please.
My name is Vera Struck and I just moved here from Massachusetts. And boards of selectmen have all different ways that they let residents know about meeting agendas and especially all documents that you guys are looking at making decisions on. Are those available to residents before the meeting? These supplementary documents from different departments so that you can look at the figures?
Budget, Keisha, you get usually get them a week or so in advance.
I do, sometimes I get them at least just before.
Like something we just got today, when we have the budget hearing, everything will be available at the budget hearing and there'll be copies provided.
Hey, do you have copies for this meeting?
No, ma'am, not.
Okay, so what would be the best procedure to be an informed resident? Do I come to?
You can ask, call the Town Hall, ask downstairs.
Uh huh.
Walk to either Sue or Keisha and see what they have available as far as the budgets go. Budget documents, because like some of these we just received.
Right, exactly. So I'm just wondering if there is any way to show people here, there's a couple new residents here. And I'm just curious how how you help them understand the figures you're discussing.
Doing right now is we're in the very preliminary phase of the budget process. And departments are bringing their budgets in and submitting them to the Select Board. Then we will go through and crunch all these numbers. Then there will be a budget hearing coming up where we will go through every line of all the budgets, line by line. And there will be plenty of available copies for that so that people can assess what and delve into it, that they can take care of.
Probably if I had seen a copy of the agenda online, I might have known that.
It is online?
It wasn't this morning, the whole system was down. I couldn't get in to your Newfields, New Hampshire site.
Is that by mid afternoon?
By mid afternoon? Okay, that's the reason I asked. Okay, thanks.
Ma'am.
I couldn't get in.
All right, anything from the audience on the budget for me? On that note, moving forward, executive reports, let's go with the planning board from thirteen.
So the first part of the hearing regarding zoning language for ADUs, the relevant parking. Also for ADUs, that discussion began and language started to get hammered out about what needs to be taken out of our current zoning, what needs to be added in and looking at size of ADUs and what the town may want to do as far as limiting having a size limit at the bottom and the top. That hearing is continued to next month again. So it was not finalized, but that was probably the biggest, most exhaustive conversation in the meeting. There was also a discussion around Muddy River Smokehouse and the question of whether or not the septic load can handle the restaurants and what they'd like to do for residents. And Glenn has some follow up for that in order to take next steps, which might include an ongoing monitoring because it might be close, close enough to need ongoing monitoring. Mobile lighting, no action's been taken there yet. Glenn is supposed to send a communication around disagreeing with their position that what they did is what they were approved to do. And the board seems pretty much in agreement that what they did is not really within the zoning allowances and they're going to be asked to make a change. Maybe they'll willingly make that change. If they don't, that'll end up here at this board needing for enforcement if necessary. And yeah, those were the top topics. You're right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Mark, recap on last night.
Okay, as many of you have seen or heard, we spent about two and a half hours last night. Newfields Conservation Commission met last night and deliberated over the question of whether parking on the Anderson Vernon Family Farm easement was allowed. It was decided by the commission that parking on the easement is allowed. Further discussion was also around a plan for soil management and overall management of the parking area on the easement. It was agreed that a management plan would be submitted by the Vernons to the Conservation Commission by May first of 2026. And that is it in a nutshell. The other portion of that was the vote for the CSX email.
Very nice segue. Anything else to add to that?
That's it.
All right. Also, let's do the do the letters and segue right into that, please, ma'am.
Yeah, so as we discussed the last meeting here, I think it was, or not, it was. There is a letter that we would like to send to CSX. The Conservation Commission listen to this, I can't say, put this down. First page. We only have one copy. So it was read last night. I think that you all have seen this before. This is the copy for signature. Tom voted that they wish to see this proceed and are willing to support it.
Gotcha. I did see that you did have a vote at last night's meeting. Okay, anything to add?
No.
Mark?
Well, just for the audience's purposes, so that you do understand what this is. We are sending out an email to CSX, which is the railroad that runs through town. We're requesting or at least opening up a conversation to the railroad to ask if we could have some kind of usage of these landlocked parcels. So that's essentially where we're at.
Any other comments, inquiries from the audience? In that case, I will make a motion. Now, the letter has been formally drafted by the Concom and sent to the Select Board with a vote on it last night. If we accept this letter and move forward and sign it and send it to CXX.
Okay.
Second? Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Will be nay already. Don't go anywhere else.
Stand right here, so he needs your pen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and just want to give it to Keisha and then we'll be all set.
It goes through a fancy electronic portal, so if you want to do that. Because I don't think it's mailed, it goes through that portal, right?
Yes, it does. So.
Is Keisha the right person to do that? It's that.
I could, I could submit it up if you if you'd like.
To use because it's not.
Yeah, I have a copy of it, but.
And then make sure Keisha gets the original.
Sure.
Capitalist.
I'll about give you the original and then just scan it. Yeah, that would be fine.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is one seventy Piscassick Road, we're dealing with tiny house issue and compliance with zoning ordinances. And I believe that is you folks, correct? I'll give you five minutes to speak to it if you'd like. Or do you just, would you like five minutes to speak to it?
Who would like to tell a story?
Please have a microphone, identify yourself, sir.
Everybody, my name's Paul Wine. I'm owner with my wife of one seventy Piscassick Road, and I have a tale of wall and stupidity. Back in September, our well went dry. Happened thirty years ago and we somehow been managing with with gallons of water and taking showers at friends' houses. At the end of September, our beloved dog of sixteen years got cancer and had to be put down. So during the month of October, we were in dry sorrow, both literally and figuratively. And also towards the end of that month, Vera, who's a member of our family, was struggling to find a place for her tiny house for the winter. And we followed Vera for years in the building of her house, traveling the country, showing people living in Hamilton, Massachusetts for years and Georgetown for years. And what happens with the tiny house hosts? One, the lady in Hamilton sold her house. People in Georgetown needed to build an addition, so off the tiny house goes. And for months, she's been looking for a place to stop it, have it rest. So it's the end of October, we're sad, we have no water, we're sad about our dog. And I talked my wife and we say, maybe we should ask, tell Vera if she can't find a place that she could park the tiny house in our yard and maybe we should dig a well. So we invited Vera to bring her tiny house up to our yard. We signed a contract with Epping Wells, Dig Well. We signed a contract with Caritage to run a somehow find a way to run a thirty amp electrical out to the tiny house so that it could survive. And then we realized that the driveway, which runs, it's an old driveway that runs into the backyard, there was a gully between the driveway and Piscassick Road. And so your daughter decided we should drill us in with gravel. So we got a guy came up and he put the big pieces of gravel in and then he put the smaller pieces in. And we had a little way to get the tiny house into our yard. That was on Tuesday. Wednesday, Vera brought her tiny house up. Thursday, you came over with Mr. Buxton's son?
Fire chief.
Oh, the fire chief, okay. And said, you guys have screwed up. What's going on here? And what I had done, the key of the story is before I invited Vera is I came to Town Hall and I said, are there any, do I need any permits to drill a well? And are there any regulations about tiny houses? Those are the only two questions I asked. And I got a no and a no. So I gallantly went off and started doing all the things I just described. After you came and were talking and I realized, oh, boy. We we heard from the Department of Transportation, you cannot just put a driveway on CSX road. And apparently, there are other issues around the tiny house, which is why we're here tonight. And I just would like to say that by way of context as well, that Vera is really knowledgeable about tiny houses. She's been involved with, was toured the country. She's been involved with drafting legislation, involved with education. So if if we need to go to education about tiny houses, we have an expert. Is that good? Is that a good context? Okay, thank you.
Can I speak? Hey, everybody. I advocate for tiny house living. My tiny house is IRC compliant. And I've worked with the ICC, the International Code Council for two years to develop the twelve fifteen small residential unit and movable tiny house standard. It is in its final draft. It's going through public comment right now, which ends on November twenty fourth. That standard will eventually become code. Part of the tiny house world has already established appendix Q in the IRC code. Now that is for a foundation. What this standard will do is put the wheels under it into the IRC. I built mine to be IRC compliant, probably because of my background with my dad and architects in my family, and I wanted to make sure the building envelope was successful. So what? So what it is, is an IRC advanced framed 1600C, all the right stuff. And it's attached with an engineering design to a chassis, an 18 foot chassis. Now, it's about 150 square feet. It's an award-winning tiny house because normally it's connected to solar. But the space it's in right now, I can't put a solar array up. You know, I can collect water, but I can't do that. So currently what I'm doing is using a couple of jackeries to, for heating and for lighting. And those are big batteries. What I would like to do, because I've worked so diligently, not only across the country, in New England and Massachusetts, by writing a bill to legalize this form of housing, which is so misunderstood. Everybody thinks it's built like an RV, but it isn't. It's built like any other regular house, so it's safe to live in and dwell in 365 days a year. I'd be happy to have it inspected. I would really love to, I guess you guys are responsible for the denial of an electrical permit to put in the 30. I'm only going to be here for like 120 to 150 days. So we also learned by your suggestion to look at variance with, I guess what we would apply for is maybe 120, 180 day variance. So I can get through the winter and find an appropriate parking space elsewhere. The driveway, when we spoke to the gentleman who we bought the gravel from, said, it's only six inches, the gully. It's probably from years of the road, the state road being built up over time. He said, so we'll put a little rip wrap in there, which is like two to four inches, and we'll put the gravel over and you'll be fine. And we are fine. And it's a right of way that's in the property owner's deed. So it's been used for, I don't know how many years, and it's just dirt. So we fixed it up and it's not perfect. But I'd be happy to open my house for inspection after I get back from Thanksgiving. If the inspector would love to see it and take a look at it. But I would really hope I could have electricity so I don't sleep in 52 degrees.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have an answer?
We're going to work our way through it here.
Okay. If you have any questions, I have a 50 slide PDF I'd be happy to send you, which is what we use for our eight minute to 10 minute discussion with legislators and town officials that we've utilized across the country. There are six states in the U.S. right now in which this housing form is legal. Six cities in which it's in Massachusetts, in which it's considered a detached ADU. Is that helpful?
The DOT has our permit after reviewing.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
All right. So thank you for your input. What the issue is here, the source of requirements for the Newfields Building Code is the Newfields Building Zoning and Land Use Ordinance. The tiny house was put into place without a building permit, without an electrical permit and work was started. That's why it was ordered to cease. And the DOT driveway cut, which is a state issue, which is not our concern directly. So the bottom line is no permits were sought or obtained prior. And all construction delivery setup of a structure requires a building permit and all electrical work requires the permit. It is the responsibility of the applicant prior to the initiation to perform all due diligence and acquire all the permits prior. And so I spent the better part of today reviewing town zoning ordinances and as far as applicability. And I'm going to go through this and it's a little longer than I'd like to, but I want to make sure to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. Dwelling is any building or portion thereof designated or used exclusively as a residence or a sleeping place of one or more persons. And a dwelling unit is one or more rooms, including cooking facility, cooking facilities and sanitary facilities. And a dwelling structure designed as a unit for occupancy by not more than one family for living and sleeping purposes. In the town of Newfields, a full frost foundation requirement exists. Now, a mobile home, which some have made the analogy of, is a transportable, single-family dwelling, which may be towed on its own running gear and which may be temporarily or permanently affixed to real estate, used for non-transient residential purposes and which conforms to applicable code. However, when we look at Schedule 1, Section 3.4, first thing we see is that a mobile home is permitted in an RA residential agriculture and a commercial district. Schedule 2, pages 7 and 8 of that book says minimum floor area for all structures in the town of Newfields have to be 625 square feet. And additionally, there is no trailers, mobile homes, trailer parks, or are parks allowed in the town of Newfields. Moving further along those lines, just to put this aspect of it aside, a single trailer or mobile home may be located anywhere in the RA or commercial districts, provided it meets frontage, front yard, side backyard, minimum land use area and minimum floor square feet area and sanitary protection requirements as specified in the ordinance. 625 feet again is the controlling number. And a full frost proof foundation is required under all mobile homes and trailers before that can go on the lot. This does not qualify as a mobile home. And neither does this meet the definition of an ADU. So going into Restrictions 6 and 10.2 on page 52, every dwelling shall have a minimum floor area of 625 square feet exclusive of porch or a breezeway. 10.2.2.2.1 Sewage, all dwellings and buildings in public and private use shall be equipped with flush toilets, septic tank, and attic with disposal facility. Now, exceptions. We look into that and there's some ancillary language in there. And then moving down to administration, Board of Selectmen shall require the application for a building permit, include a plot plan and obtain all necessary information to enable the building inspector to ascertain whether the proposed building or structure and its intended use comply with the provisions of this ordinance. Specifically in this case, size is the first issue. No building permit shall be issued until the building inspector has certified that the proposed building or structure and its intended use comply with the provisions of this ordinance. It shall be unlawful for any person to commence work for erection or alteration, not including building, maintenance of any building or structure until a permit has been duly granted. And 10.5.1.7 Permit for occupancy. No building subject to this ordinance shall be occupied until the certificate of occupancy has been issued by the building inspector. So what we have here, ma'am, unfortunately, is your building does not meet the requirements and meet the zoning requirements of the town of Newfields. Size is the primary issue at this point. There's a number of other issues that I referenced here. But the 625 square feet issue is one of the primary problems. And if you make the analogy as to a mobile home, it requires a foundation. There's also the issue of septic and toilet. And so bottom line is, it does not comply with the town requirements. Yes, ma'am.
Speaking to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Have a chance to.
Please step up to the microphone.
Thank you. Like many tiny houses, I have what's known as a compost toilet, which is essentially a small septic system. Okay, that's what your septic system is, is a large compost toilet. That's what I have, so there's no sewage going anywhere. It is disposed in Massachusetts with an earth hauler. But I would need to find a new person up here in order to dispose of that compost, which is basically cedar chips and your urine, your work. Other deposits, okay? So they are inside of a closed unit after you do your business, right? This is EPA compliant in Massachusetts. And for us, I had to build an EPA compliant humanure compost bin, which is closed and very specifically built. And you have to wait two years. It's, there's two chambers. It has to be, there are a number of things you have to do to maintain it and make sure the temperature is correct. So in terms of things coming from the tiny house, there is that. What goes down the drain is all strained, okay? Because I don't eat much meat, there might be a little juice or something. I don't fry. I'm one of those campers who's a wiper, which means I don't like to wash stuff. So any grease, I wipe out with a paper towel, which goes into the trash. This is how I function in my tiny house. That's why it's award-winning. It uses sustainable and ecological practices. My toilet was EPA certified in Massachusetts. I'm not sure how it works in New Hampshire, but I did come up here under the guise of there wasn't from your town, a response that there was going to be any problem. It is cited with the appropriate setbacks. No, not all the butters have been talked to. Okay, but two of the neighbors think it's just great. I haven't met all the rest yet, but I haven't even been here a week. So, you know, it's pretty hard to do that. In terms of any other safety or health concerns, I have appropriate fire retarders inside. I have of my tiny house. I also have two forms of egress, a double door out the back and a side door. So I think your health inspector or your building inspector, like others, have come through this award-winning tiny house, seen its building envelope, seen all my drawings on vellum, seen all my pictures of ecofoil, my recycled blue jeans, the inner and outer specific sheathing, my R values, et cetera, and have said it's wonderful. Now the square footage, I can't, I can't. You know, I didn't know you had that limit, but the town also didn't tell the property owner that there was an issue. So all tiny houses of 400 square feet or under, they will never meet a minimum requirement like that. I was hoping that I could come and get a variance for this because I suffer under a hardship. I live on 12,000 a year from social security. So I don't have much leeway financially. So I was hoping the town would love to have an award-winning tiny house, which they could have, you know, I'd love to open it up for a tour for the town to show them what this kind of living is because it's so popular and viral. And it's what is going to fill the housing crisis void. It's another tool. And so I was hoping that if anything, you all might be a little bit charmed by what a tiny house is and may consider it an exception. Otherwise, I'll have to live in parking lots of Walmart without any heat and go from one parking lot to another because I can't find a tiny house parking space in such a short period. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I empathize with your position. However, it is incumbent on the property owners to fight. My understanding of the question was, do you have tiny home restrictions? And we do not address tiny homes. It's still incumbent upon the person that wants to build or insert a piece of property to do all due diligence and talk with the building inspector and/or the planning board or the necessary folks. I do not have the authority or the ability to unilaterally make a change as far as these town ordinances. And as it stands under the town ordinances that we have for zoning, ma'am, the profit, your tiny home is not acceptable in the town of Newfields. I'm sorry, I can't change that.
Even if it is, has a proper foundation and skirting?
It would have, it has to meet that 625 square foot requirement. And it requires a frost foundation and it has to be an incinerate toilet. Does not work. It has to be hooked up to the septic system.
Ethologically, I can't, I can't do something like that because I've saved 680,000 gallons of potable water by using a compost toilet.
Ma'am, I totally appreciate what you're saying, but these are the zoning rules of the town and that's where it's at.
So you as a selectman are refusing to allow the electrical to continue?
Well, there's no, you do not have a building permit and an electrical permit.
Well, the property permits online are not available for my kind of construction.
That's because your property, ma'am, excuse me, your property does not fit into the town of Newfield zoning ordinance. Michael?
Michael Sununu, 184 Exeter Road. Just so everybody understands, the state of New Hampshire actually has twice in the last several years, I think it was in 2021 HB 588 and in 2022, I think it was HB 1068, 1062. They considered tiny home, tiny homes at the state of New Hampshire and allowing the type of facility she describes. Both of those bills were actually, didn't even make it out of the House. They were rejected by the state mainly because the terms and conditions really contrasted with the, the goals of local zoning and local business ordinance, uh, building ordinances. And this is despite the fact that in Concord, everybody and anybody is looking for housing solutions that, that she mentions. I'm just saying this as, this isn't just a town issue. This is a statewide issue and the state has twice considered this as a solution for housing and has been rejected twice. So I, I think the town is, is correct in identifying what our ordinances are and the fact that the state twice considered this and rejected it. I don't think the, the town has any leeway. Thank you.
I just want to clarify that when the topic of zoning or zoning variance comes up, the word hardships actually has a different meaning than what people assume when they hear it. And it is tied to the limits of the property, something unique about the property. It's not about personal hardship or financial hardship. It really is a unique use of that word for zoning purposes. And so residents, homeowners, landowners do have options to explore a variance, but that doesn't mean it would get approved or that it's guaranteed to get approved. And the hardship that's part of meeting the requirements to be eligible for a variance isn't about a person's personal hardship or financial hardship. It is relative to the shape, size or position of the property. And so it's, it's a unique aspect of the property that's unlike other properties around it that would make meeting the zoning requirement impossible. And that's why special permissions are requested and considered. And that is a zoning board function. But it's, if it's something you were thinking about, it, it, it's not, the word doesn't mean hardship in the sense that people often assume that it does. I just wanted to.
The words define it so.
Right, right. So for zoning purposes, where it comes to variances, the word hardship actually means something else, unique about the property, not about the person. I just wanted to clarify that aspect. It can be really confusing.
I can empathize with you and I understand where you're at. On the, at the same point, I'll just give you a very short, brief idea of why this would be a no, just from the get-go. Fixing up homes, like if I've done some house flips here and there, you would always have to apply for a permit. And the minute you do, you have someone come in and see what you're doing and they come in and they'll stop everything. And I used to think, that's, this is like a royal pain in the neck. Why, what, what is this oversight? Well, the oversight is for safety purposes. Let's just say, let's just say, for instance, the electricity went in erroneously or something happened with the, with the septic or something like that. If someone gets hurt on the property and we allowed it, we just let that come through, we're liable. The town is liable. So that's, those, those checkpoints are necessary. And I learned that the hard way, that you, those things are necessary. And you do have to clear it with some oversight. That's, that's the idea.
Can I respond to that?
Please step up to the, ma'am, ma'am, please step up to the microphone.
Sorry. I usually talk so a lot. I don't need a microphone, but how I can respond to that is that not only did I use certified electrical inspector and plumbing inspector. The plumbing inspector was so excited about my, that's right, composting toilet. He said, how great. You don't have to waste the city's water. We don't have to worry about how you're doing it. You have your humanure compost bin that the EPA and the Conservation Commission has looked at. That's fine enough for us.
You just have to file a permit though. That's the point.
I looked on your website the day you came. I looked on your website the day you came and spoke to the property owners and you have only permits for new construction, commercial construction. I even asked at the office and what permit do I, would I use in the first?
Anytime some new introduction comes into any town, any anywhere in the U.S., you're gonna need a permit. Anywhere you go.
Well, that's interesting because in the two other cities in Massachusetts, that wasn't necessary. But they also know about tiny houses and have already made them legal in bylaws. And they are currently passing a bill, it's in ways and means right now.
I I appreciate what you're saying. But Mr. Sanunu's point about the state has made their decision. We have, our town ordinances are in place and as much as I empathize with your situation, we do not have the ability, we are, we take an oath to enforce the town ordinances.
I understand, but you, but just to help educate you about how they are put on a foundation. It's not on a typical foundation. Yes, they're put on appropriate blocks that can handle the weight. They are stabilized with jacks and there is usually significant skirting utilized. Okay? In many cases, like in my last case, there were tie downs that were required.
Ma'am.
But you're still, you're you're refu, you're refusing essentially, in my mind, just so I understand, you are refusing, saying that the reason you're refusing is that you're concerned about liabilities of someone falling in the, on the property or safe to your health.
The refusal is based on your structure does not comply or meet the minimum requirements of the town ordinances. And as such, we cannot allow it to be put into place and stay.
Okay, so are you gonna give me some time to leave?
We will give you time, we, we will work our way through that here in a minute. Okay. Any input from the audience? Yep, up to the microphone, please.
Debbie Plonzo, thirty Main Street. Um, I don't know if you're aware that there's a campground over on one oh eight that maybe they take winter campers. Um, there's also um Wakita in Hampton Falls, that's not too far from here. Just a thought, and I just wanted to say that the whole idea of your tiny home sounds fascinating and interesting and I would be interested in having a tour if you'd be available.
So I'm just very, very concerned as to why it's acceptable in so many parts of the country and yet not here. This is my thing. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Yeah, anything else?
No.
Mark, anything else?
Oh, there are some other, there are some options like Debbie just brought up.
My understanding is they're not open in the winter. They only go from actually April to November. That's the way it's done in Massachusetts as well.
You know, after the meeting, I'll give you a couple of suggestions, at least.
Be happy to consider those.
Uh, in that case, I'll make the motion, uh, if there's no other input, that we will issue a cease and desist order. And we will set that up and we will set it uh for the removal of the property. We'll work out the details uh in conjunction with the building inspector and move forward on that. It pains me to have to do that. I would like to be able to tell you, great. I can't do that. I took an oath and to support defend these ordinances and the rules and the laws of the state. And I have no option, ma'am.
So I should forget my Thanksgiving vacation?
I don't know what to tell you, ma'am. I can't.
Cease and desist sounds pretty serious.
It it is serious.
So doesn't have a time limit? Can I find out what that is?
Well, we're.
Make an agreement now is my point.
Michael.
What?
Any input on windows?
You guys have flexibility. Certainly a flexibility in terms of getting done.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at? For work.
Probably the end of the month, I get back after Thanksgiving. That only gives me three or four days to the tiny house, find out.
About thirty days?
Yeah, thirty days would be, I think it's a fair enough amount of time. So from what's today?
Eighteenth.
So December eighteenth.
So I will make a motion that we move forward with the cease and dis, assist order with thirty day window. And by the end of thirty days, the tiny home must be removed from the property. A second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye. Sorry, ma'am. Right. Next item on the agenda. Uh, let's go to prior meeting minutes. Oh, I forgot that. I want to do the twenty twenty five municipal assessment data certificates. Basically, this is the assessor Rodwood puts his, it's a real estate uh bills report that he has to file, set in. And it's just pretty much uh his annual compilation of what's transpired in the town. It's kind of boilerplate paperwork. Thank you, Chief. And make a motion to, nobody has any issues, we'll sign it, move ahead. Okay, prior meeting minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at them? Yeah?
Yeah.
Mark?
I'm fine with that.
In that case, I'll make a motion, we accept prior meeting minutes.
Sure. Bye.
Uh, okay. Because I had a conversation with Sue today in regards to the budget season and all the fun and games that this entails, I would like to uh set a tentative additional select board meeting for the ninth of December. And that one will be tentative depending on how much progress we made and what surfaces in the, in the give. Cat?
Three.
Mark?
Okay.
Can you put that on now? Make sure that gets on the agenda. Uh, yeah, status on the warrant article five and ten issued to the state.
Do we need to have um public hearing to reword them in anticipation of them being back on the ballot in the spring? Since we haven't gotten an additional update from Derek, other than his guidance, that they should be rewritten and revoted on? Unless we hear otherwise from him, I think we have to have a hearing on it.
Have you put a squeeze on him here?
Um, I can, I can post we go.
Yeah, we need to jump on him ugly to get this done, because I really don't want to go to a hearing uh option. Uh, one of the other issues is when we were doing the town hall work this summer and we uh went and found all the pins in the posts for the town property. And the pro, and the pin with that marks the corner of the property between town hall and the yellow house next door. Uh, the butters have been using town property. So uh with the concurrence of the board, I will give them a call and talk to them about it. Uh, and I will uh mark the pin and flag it. And I have a letter for you guys to look at. And if it gives me that, we'll sign it, but it's important that we assert ownership of the property. There's this thing in the Hampshire law and all state law, common law, adverse possession with open and continuous and notorious uh that's the original, please. Open, continuous and notorious uh possession of the property after twenty years, you can claim it's your property. And things like that tend to fall by the wayside. Even though it's only been five or six years, it could very easily disappear. So I think it's proven and responsible on the part of the town to address this matter with them. And that way, uh, it will preclude them from parking on town land and keeping their trash cans, et cetera, on town property. Any comments, Cat?
That looks like a nice friendly letter.
And I'll give them a call before I uh, before I send the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, probably a follow up question later on, just about parking.
Go ahead and sign this and. All right, so you'll jump ugly on Derek, getting hot on this. Okay. Uh, it's a tick, tick, tick. All set?
Yeah.
Any other items in work or issues from the board members?
No.
The last time we met, we talked about um the traffic safety group and progress that was made gathering information. We shared information back. And there are some residents that would be interested in having a voluntary group. Um, is there anything specific we would need to do in order to sort of hand that off to them? And the goal would be for them to brainstorm low cost voluntary education campaign ideas and um things that they're interested in doing to help spread the word about driving safely, pedestrian safety, bicycle safety in Newfields. Is there a specific process for that? As some were leaving the meeting, they said they would be very interested in sort of taking that on.
I think it's just a private entity that's organizing and following the their north star and they can move forward and sound what they need to or want to with the board.
Okay, great. I'm gonna um follow up with Chief, um, because you may have email addresses or a list of names of people who had come together originally, and I do think it would be wise to invite um all town residents to participate, um, who's interested uh through maybe the town email that we have, have Sue send something out. So I'll follow up with Chief and I'll follow up with Sue on that. So that everyone has an opportunity to be included who would like to be.
And the other part of that, we we were talking about the school crossing. Is there a deadline for that to apply for the uh lighting?
They've got funding that they have to expend. Mr. Mackey, uh, they have funding uh approximately seven thousand dollars or so is the last number I heard. And uh, it's, it's their, it's their issue. If the S A U owns this as far as taking care of this.
Subpoor, please, Mike.
It's their call, in other words.
Yeah, yeah, that's the S A U with uh splitting together a, a plan.
Pardon?
Is your name?
Thank you, Mackey.
Sorry.
He's your. Keisha.
Doesn't know you, though.
Ah, right, yeah, okay. So, yeah, there, there is a plan underway for um to be presented. Tell me.
For the March.
Right.
Question. I think I'm gonna segue back to the conversations that you and I have had and that we had the last select board meeting. If this, if your plan passes, there won't be any resolution till mid summer at the earliest for the crosswalk. And there is no Plan B, is my understanding, to deal with the crosswalk individually. Is that correct, Mike?
That's my understanding at this point, right, that the, the funding does not exist today to deal with the, with the crosswalk alone.
Yeah.
Um, and that the plan um would deal with it this summer. So there would be spring school year time and then the, the uh project would take place in the summer.
You can see how this kind of dovetails, well, maybe not my brain housing group, that the S A U has seven or eight thousand dollars, it would probably be ten thousand dollars with the labor to get that crosswalk ADA compliant, get the signs up. And then this is addressed and we're not exposing people using the crosswalk, including the police officers in the crosswalk, to the threat of, of traffic issues. And instead of waiting till next fall, we could do it for that seven, eight, ten thousand dollars. And we mitigated a large portion of that threat.
Yeah, I would be careful not to speak to the S A U on my part.
And neither am I, and I was.
I'm not sure that money is available. There's quote unassigned money available for the crosswalk. I'm, I'm not aware of that.
Oh, they had seven thousand dollars unassigned that they needed to spend by the tenth. It's what I got when I went to the last school board meeting, the one, yeah. So the bottom line is, this is like splitting hairs here between us. But here is a tentative solution that would provide serious improvement in safety to the situation. And I find if we could solve this problem in the interim, why wait till next year, till next summer?
I think part of that concern relates to the, the solution for the school safety project involves moving the crosswalk. So I think the promise would be if you were to install a light at the current location.
Yeah.
Um, and then if the plan is approved, then you've got to pay to move it and re-stripe and all of that, as well as change a curb for ADA compliance reasons.
Is that, so I'll go back at him, is that worth this risk that's faced as far as the crossing issue? And we've had multiple with, with sun angle and stuff, and that changes, you know, with the, with the month, et cetera. I'm, I'm just verbalizing here.
I share those concerns, I, I agree, and uh I've spent time with the chief there in the morning. And it's frightened me, to be honest, you know, in terms of being on that crosswalk and um also seeing the, the flow of traffic and conflicts between cars and kids. It's not a good situation. And so um it's something certainly that the S A U, I would think, not speaking on their behalf, but certainly I would advocate for as well, is for them to consider if they've got some resources available. And it doesn't end up doubling the cost of doing a crosswalk. They're, they're addressing it sooner rather than later, but I'm just not sure what flexibility they have and also how that would affect a longer term solution, which would ultimately add more costs.
Yeah. It was reported that they were told it's gonna be thirty five thousand dollars to make that ADA compliant. And it's no more than ten ballpark. So neither here nor there, we can't solve it. I think we've verbalized what the issue is sufficiently. Instead of beating its horse to death anymore. Right?
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Anything else from board?
No.
Anything else from the audience?
I don't know.
Mike Mackey, come on down.
Too short. Uh, the first relates to ADU, this is a zoning night, where the state has changed their regulations for ADUs from requiring them to be attached, but now they can be either attached or detached. So my, my question is, does the town anticipate changing its zoning, it is illegal as you speak? That's what I thought.
Yes, the first public hearing was had last Thursday and the next one will be had in the next planning board meeting. And along with changing the language to be in alignment with what the state is requiring towns to allow as legal, we are also looking at the minimum and maximum sizes and making sure that there's um a clear understanding of what that is.
Good to know, because the reason I ask, I'm just involved with the group rewriting some covenants for our neighborhood, so there's rules in there that aren't consistent, but the state regs now are somewhat consistent in town as well, certainly.
And that includes the parking for ADU, which we would currently be requiring more parking than the state allows towns to require. So we'll have to change that to be in alignment with the state.
Yeah, and then the other quick question, it relates more to a, I guess, a process issue in terms of zoning changes and rate in general and how they appear on the warrant art. Remember, the summary I raised that question, is there a way to make the meaning of the zoning change clear on the warrant? Perhaps for the warrant article is issued, but at least having it on the warrant article so people have a, a better understanding of what they're voting for or against.
I think it's definitive, it's a great, easy done. We'll find a way to make that.
That's fast. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michael. Now, Mr. Sanunu.
Yeah, if I can follow up on that. Um, to your point, Mike. Uh, first of all, every town in the state is basically rewriting their ADU ordinances because they're required to. Almost no, none of the towns basically meet the new state requirements. The concern is, is that because of the verbiage, a lot of these towns are gonna vote these things down. If that happens, what ends up, basically the state law becomes our law. Uh, unless we enact warrant articles that, you know, give us where we have supply. But it, so if these do get voted down because of the verbiage or because people in town just don't want to make these changes, it does matter. The state law is gonna overrule it.
The state law is going to overrule it, anything that we do. So there's some people.
Thank you. This is becoming a weekly event. Mark. Come on down.
I'm Mark Sider and I live on Heath Drive. And I hope you'll forgive me for a couple more questions about the town library.
All good.
First one is, I believe the last, last board meeting, at least the last one that I was attended, the library trustee report of some sort was on the agenda. I don't know if I have the correct, the correct description of that, but the library trustee report of some sort was on the.
They were supposed to wrap up their budget.
Yeah, and they weren't present, as, as I understood it. And so have they provided a subsequent input to the select board on that?
They have not. I have been in correspondence with the chair and said, you need to get this information to us. And he has been researching it. Uh, we have put him on the schedule for the second of December.
Okay.
And he'll get 10 minutes to present the information. So it will be number four, three or four.
Okay, all right, that's great, thank you. That's a good, good, clear answer, thank you. Uh, second one is, has the select board made any decisions about how to fund the library, the town library for next year?
And we, we are still collating information.
Right.
And we've got to put it all in the pot, stir it up and then figure out what we're going to.
Right, yeah, I, I appreciate that. I thought that would be the answer. The reason I ask is that I began today working with Sue to come up with warrant articles that I hope to create, provided this. But I want to coordinate that with what the select board plans because maybe you're going to supersede what I might think I would do, so.
I think we can dovetail this if you work, give us just a little bit of time to work.
Sure.
This process.
Sure. Yeah, no arm twisting, I just wanted to see if, if there was a decision.
It may make your point, your effort, boo.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Going once, going twice, anybody else? Going three times, I'll make a wager.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.